Okay, why don't we get started with our work session? Go over the agenda, issues with the meeting minutes of our last meeting. I will accept numbers read. Abstract audited vouchers, I got them. Okay, outside. Listed correspondence, we only have two this evening. One is from the Town of Lancaster Building Department, providing their report of building permanent applications, open complaints, inspection, and expired permits that were filed for properties within the village. And the second one is correspondence from Key Capture Energy, providing notice of its intent to submit a bid for its proposed battery energy storage project in response to NYSERDA's upcoming request for proposals for long-term contracts to purchase the index storage credits. Any comments, questions?
Just the Key Capture, you know, that's part of what you worked on, John, you and Art, to get the battery storage facility, get that put in place, so people could actually build these things in our village, so.
Sure. So, I think it's good with that. And then we have four resolutions this evening. The first is to schedule a public hearing in the council chambers on Monday, December 22nd, 2025, to allow members of the public to provide feedback on the 2025 Village of Lancaster and Village of DePew joint comprehensive plan, and further to direct the Clerk Treasurer Segmeyer to advertise this public hearing per normal procedures. We've been working on this thing for months, and it's come along quite well, and I think it'll be good for all of us, so we'll get that down.
There's like three steps we need to complete, to actually adopt it, so this is just one of those steps. It has to go to Erie County asset, and we have to do a seeker, but, so this is just one of those.
Yeah, this would be that first step.
Yep.
And this resolution authorizing myself as mayor to sign in approved modification, number one, to the agreement with NYSERDA related to a clean energy communities program grant for the purpose of, to update and revise Exhibit A, Statement of Work, and revised days of November 24th, 2025.
Very simply, this is the upgrades to the North End Fire Hall for efficiency and weatherization, cost a bit more than we originally planned, so it's just moving money around within the grant to offset those costs. Pretty straightforward.
Number three is a resolution authorizing myself as mayor to sign, execute, and submit an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Erie for funding in the amount of $40,500 toward the install, installation of an ADA crosswalk on Clark Street, along with requirement documentations per the terms of the agreement. Legislator Tadaro was instrumental in getting this for us, and this is something that's been needed back there for years, especially with the Opera House, so this is definitely something we want to pursue. And the fourth is a resolution to approve the proposal from TechNet MSP in the amount of $5,900 for the purchase of a two-door access system for the municipal building on an emergency basis to upgrade the existing key fob system, which is currently inaccessible to make edits or manage users due to a damaged connection along with the outdated hardware and unsupported software. And building security, you know, tannamout, so.
Do we know how many, well, so, I guess, I, you sent me the email, John, I appreciate that. I had follow-up questions, though, and I figured I'd just wait till the meeting. Will this use the existing fobs, or will we get new fobs? If so, how many?
They, so they allow only the, the system can handle up to 10,000 users. They only give you up to, for that price, up to 20 fobs, but people can access, can open it with their phones.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. So, they say most people don't, most people don't use the fobs, but have certain amount of fobs. If we need more, we can get more.
And Mike will have direct access to all of that, so he's controlling it, or will it, we have to go to a second party?
No, I think it'll all be through, through Mike, right? And through, through.
Yeah, it'll be, we'll have, it'll be a cloud-based system, so essentially you'll have your administrators that can access and make changes.
Okay.
But at least this way, it's not just sitting on my computer, and if a wire gets damaged, then it's like we can't.
Yeah.
I can access the program, I just can't send any data to the doors right now, so.
Yeah.
It still, it still works, it's still, you know, based on what's already been authorized, it's still working.
But we can't make changes.
But we can't make changes, right? If a new user comes in, we'd have to try and find a, you know, a fob, and as you've seen, you know, fobs in the old system, fobs might be, get transferred from one person to another without ever, you know, getting to my office to change the names and stuff like that, so it's just, it'll be better in a cloud-based system.
Yeah, it's about time. The system's been in place for quite some time.
Right, and even for like meetings like tonight, if, you know, no one has a key fob or whatever, I can just always have on, whenever there's a board meeting, just schedule it. Unlock at 5:30, lock at 8:30, or 8 o'clock.
We can do that with this one, too?
You know, then you don't have to worry about fobbing, or, it'll just automatically happen.
Good. Yeah, there's been a number of times where the door was left unlocked, and one of the members of the fire department would call somebody and say, no, that door is open.
Yeah.
So we finally gave him a fob, and he's been locking it, so that ought to eliminate that, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Committee follow-up, financing claim, again, the LoSAP vote will be scheduled in March. I think the fire department's happy with the conditions and the way that the proposal's gonna go, so hopefully we can get the vote out, and get the people's opinion, and get this thing done. And other than that, I have nothing else under financing claims?
I, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, we received responses, six responses to our RFQ for municipal engineer consultation So trustee Miller, Clerk Treasurer Segmeyer, and I met, and we narrowed it down to four. I would like to schedule first presentations with those four companies. The date I was looking at was January 14th. I don't know, the, the board can be here, you know, we can, we can do it together. Are Wednesdays usually good for you, is January 14th? Does that seem, is it far enough in the future that you could?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I guess, Mike, if you want to reach out to the selected, should I name them in the meeting, or, you know?
No, I don't think it's necessary.
If you want to reach out to them, if that date works for you, too, I'd like you there as well.
Sure.
And I think, Matt, do you think January 14th, Wednesday, would work for you to listen to the engineer presentation?
First three Wednesdays in the month are scheduled with historic preservation and/or town planning board meetings.
Those are at seven, right?
They're at seven o'clock, yeah.
Would it be too demanding for us to try to get in, get it in before then? So maybe start at like four, and see if we can get them in?
I can make myself available.
I have, I just have a, could we do it earlier? Like, forget that, because I just have, my work, I have a work function at six.
Okay. Yeah, do you want to do, maybe we start at one o'clock? Is that okay?
Yeah, one or two, whatever.
Yeah, and then, you know, I'm not sure how long they'll need, I'm guessing like maybe half an hour, with a little bit of time for Q and A. And there's always a chance that one or two of them will say they can't do that day, and we can, well, we'll have to schedule a second day, but I think we could try to fit them in on that day first. Do I need to schedule that with a motion during the meeting, then?
I don't, I don't think so, I think.
Okay.
You can if you want, but I don't think it's necessary, I mean, you're.
Because it'll be an exact.
It's kind of like interviews, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't hurt if you want to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule it, that way it'll just be, you know, it's out there that this is proceeding. So we'll say one o'clock on January 14th. Okay? That's it for financing claims.
All right, Paul, of course, Chairman O'Malley.
Few things I would like to give more work to Wayne and his crew. The past few years, we've, the stairway between Coward Creek Park and West Main Street, it's been, the past few years, we've shut it down in the winter because it's difficult to maintain, and just, and if we don't maintain it right, it becomes dangerous. The plan was this year to shut it down as well, and last Thursday, when we were at the climate, Forest Advisory Meeting, you mentioned that you was gonna shut it down, and you did the next day. It didn't go over well. So this is, this is the first year we've had a winter where that stairway was there, and the new building is there. Shutting it down, the nice part of shutting it down is you don't have to maintain it for the winter. The bad part is people have to walk further, walk around the west part of the building, that can be a bit much, so. You're willing to maintain it, right?
I do the best I can, it's not gonna be like the first thing, it'll be, just like we do the sidewalk.
Sure. Right, right. So it's gonna be, it's just, and, and I've said to you before, at some point, you need to start making, we need to make a list of additional things that DPW staff has taken on over the past few years that didn't exist five years ago, whatever it was. This is another one, and that's gonna be some time-consuming, to shovel stairs, however often it happens, so that's gonna hopefully happen. I mean, it is gonna happen, and hopefully it's not gonna be too difficult. Only other thing is, I've got a little project where, it's dawned on me in the past, we have several Americans, including outside this building, several American flags through our properties, that aren't lit at night. Supposed to be lit, but US Code is supposed to either take down the flags or light them at night. So Wayne's going through some, probably gonna try one with a solar light. Solar would be better than having to do, having to hardwire them, and experiment with one, experiment at DPW.
Yeah.
To see how it looks.
Mm-hmm.
Try to do something, this is something that I, even before I was on this board, I used to drive down the street and notice that they weren't lit at night, so we're gonna try to work on something over the next few months, to see the best option, to have our flags properly lit at night. That's all I have.
Okay, anything for public works? I mean, it's a great idea, we, that's how Veterans Park became illuminated, because the flag wasn't lit, and while we were doing it, we did the monuments and everything else, so it worked out nice.
Yeah.
I had a question for John, maybe this is for Tammy instead. Do you know if the, the negotiations with Union have started yet?
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, we've, we've been meeting.
Right.
Oh, sorry, I haven't been aware of it.
I haven't been proud of it, but.
Yeah, no, we've been meeting, we've met with them a couple times, and things are going along fine, but there's really not much to report.
Okay.
So, but yes, we met with them twice, and I think things are going well. Ah, let's see, public safety, again, we're on the proposal for the $40,500 for that ADA crosswalk in the Clark Street parking lot through legislator Tadaro. This is something that's been long overdue, and it's nice that he was able to help us with that, and hopefully we'll get that up and going probably by springtime, and begin by summer. The traffic safety concerns, we were put on a list with state DOT to do a traffic study that Mr. Winter brought up, and I have not heard back any more than we are on the list. And we did get moved up, what that means was never defined, so I'll continue to look at that. And other than that, I have nothing else under public safety. Building license codes, Chairman O'Malley.
Thank you. Few things, I'm gonna start with, with talking about signage, signage codes, and Art, jump in whenever is the right time, but feel free to, which I'm sure you will. Little bit of a long story, two things with our signage. The first is, in April of 2023, this board had adopted a new zoning, and at that point, we had, did away with section 350, 350-17, which was, we replaced 350-17 in its entirety, which created the three new mixed-use districts. In doing so, the signage aspect of it also went away and wasn't replaced. That wasn't just an oversight, because at the same time, the board was working with CPL, and at the same time was working on a, there was a proposal from CPL that stated, that we have, that stated April 2023. It was never, never adopted, so for the past two years, there really has been no signage code in the mixed-use districts. What we've done for that is got together, formed a committee, and got together, and the, the proposal from CPL is very voluminous, would be nearly impossible to, to be able to adapt that into our own zoning. So what I've asked the committee to do, and the committee includes the ZBA Planning Commission, Historic Commission, is to take a look at the proposal from, from CPL, see what we need, what in there is, there may be a hundred different things in there, see what in there is crucial, what in there is a great idea that we don't have, that we really need to do, as opposed to adopting that whole thing. In the meantime, Art had at one point suggested, why don't we just reinsert what was the prior zone, the prior signage code into, into there? But at the same time, there were some other issues. So issue number two is, in January 2021, Art had sent an email to this board, a memo to this board, pointing out some issues with the signage code, and the best quick example of it is, is something came up back, way back when, in 2020, someone had reached out to the, sorry, this is a long story, but it's a work session, so. Somebody had reached out to the village board, or to the code enforcement officer at the time, and said, I want to put up a no trespassing sign. Do I need permission? Turned out they do. You need permission, and the permission has to come from the village board. So the way Art, Art, Art found some peculiarities, let's say, in our code, which is a little overbearing, showing that the village board, for instance, needs to sign off on each sign permit. You want, you want to pick up there, and show what you've done? So Art, Art had proposed some changes back in 2021 that were never adapted. So as long as we're doing this, what we're looking into doing is, Art had prepared a, fast forward to this year, Art prepared a suggested new code, which would be pretty much reinserting what we had in chapter 350, prior to it being taken away, but also rectifying. There's two sections in 350 that have to be changed, and one in, I think it's 144, which is fees, which would have to be changed. So Art's done a lot of work in doing that, and right now, we're looking into how do we get that into play? And what I've asked is for the HPC zoning and, and planning commission to take a look at that, like I said, it's a large report, proposal that CPL prepared, pick out what we need out of that. And we'll, we'll use, most likely, we'll, we'll look to adopt Art's proposed new code, possibly inserting some additions from the CPL proposal. Anything you want to?
The good news is that the mayor is in the loop, you've been in the, you've been in the loop on all these communications.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that's the good news, like he's pretty much facile in, is, is all of it.
Yeah, so it's been going on for a while, and I didn't, I know, a few months ago, I had to put it on, I guess in September, I had to put it on my list here, but, so we're making progress with that, because, don't look for anything until probably the end of January, because when we sent it out to the different, to the different committees, it's not something that, you know, at nighttime, it's not something you can just review within an hour, so it's gonna take some time. So man, this is not a great time of year to have a little bit of free time at nighttime. I ask everybody if they can get back to us by, say, late January with recommendations. That's that. The easy one, moving on to other things, is tree code. Tree code has been on this committee list as something, there needs to be some changes made to tree code that Amy has worked on. Amy had sent, I think, our entire board a suggestion of, of changes, I think it was back in the summer. So Amy and I got together, redlined the code. Before we sent it to Art, we also sent it to the Forest Advisory Committee, asking for their input, and then within a week or two, maybe within two weeks, Art had been, send you something, redlined just some changes, and it's, simple changes, like, you know, certain trees, we have, we codified a few years ago exactly what trees can be planted here, and changes should be made to that, probably wasn't necessarily 100% correct. And the only other thing I have for this is building lights and codes, as long as we're talking about the new fob system, we had back in September, I think it was, I had brought it up, that in our, back in June, in our building, we allow access to, historically for years, maybe it's been going on for decades, I don't know. There is, there are, we have certain groups, certain community groups that have access to this building, they have fobs, and they're allowed in. I, I think that's a security issue, I really do. We have our courts here, we have, we meet here, the fire department's in the building. I don't have, I'm sure that the people we're giving the keys to are well-intentioned, but things get lost. And, you know, I just don't, and I've checked with other, I've checked just to make sure, you know, I'm not the only one being a jerk here. Checked the Town of Lancaster and DePew, neither, neither one of them allow this type of thing, where we just give out keys. And if we give it to one group, what's gonna happen when the next one comes, when there's a reading club, or if there's a, something else coming next month, how do we say no? So when we discussed this a few months ago, we said, okay, well, a good time to address it will be when we get the new fobs, which is gonna come soon. My thought is that we don't, that's a good time that we tell the other groups, and I'd like to give them notice, give them 30 or 60 days' notice, that you're not gonna be able, we can't keep doing this. If everyone's good with that, I'd like to have discussions, everyone feel?
Are you gonna write up a, a policy of like what, what can, can't be used, how do, how do you get?
No, I wasn't gonna write it up, I was gonna say we don't allow anybody anymore, nobody else has access.
It's just done.
There's no reason for a policy. Yeah, I mean, I doubt we ever had a policy. If we had a policy somewhere that says we give a key to anybody who wants a key, then I'll write a policy to override it. But I doubt that's anywhere.
Yeah, I'm not aware of an actual policy that we have for the use of the building. I know the school district has building use forms, that if somebody wanted to use it, they'd have to fill it out, and it would be approved by the board.
Yeah.
And I think that's just, I mean, for years, so many other groups have used it, and it was never a problem that I'm aware of, but that, that doesn't mean it wasn't a problem.
I'm gonna get together.
And your proposals for, just like after hours, like if, if those groups that have used, that currently use the building during the day.
Yeah.
That's fine, as long as we're not, because we're here.
Thank you for bringing it up, and that's part of the intent, was, yeah, I have no problem with people using our community rooms for community purposes during the day, but I've come in here on weekends, and there's, it's weird when you come in here, and you don't know who's here, if someone's having a meeting, and there, to me, it shouldn't be anyone except for village employees, including the fire department, the, all of our staff, including our planning, zoning, historic commissions, et cetera. I don't think we should just be giving keys to anybody who wants one, and that's, to some extent, I'm not saying that's exactly what's happened, but that's really what we've set ourselves up for. Thoughts?
It, I was something that we should have a discussion, and make sure everybody's in agreement on it, there's, it's kind of hard to take things away from people, but there, again, I mean, over the years, villages always tried to cooperate with other groups, and, you know, maybe it's gotten out of hand.
I mean, as a trustee, if someone came to me as a group and said, hey, will you, as long as I'm in the building while that happens, can I say yes to a group to come in for an hour once a week, as long as I'm here? Or is it no?
I don't, I think that's okay. I, I don't mind that, my, my, at all, what I mind is giving people keys.
Right.
That's what it is, and, and so this outdated fob system that we have, we're soon gonna be replacing. Now would be the time to, to determine, are we gonna give them access to the new fob system, which means give them a code on their app, and an app, or we're gonna at some point say, okay, maybe we shouldn't be doing this.
Can it be preset, and say, okay, you know, this group wants to use it on Mondays at 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and that's it?
Probably, we never got that many details, I think we could also hopefully give them, so, let's say, let's say, because I'm not sure when this new system's gonna be in place, but hopefully sooner rather than later.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the case, we're gonna have to give them temporary access, maybe give them a code for 60 days, or 30 days, or whatever it is. And, you know, I'm not looking to be the bad guy here, and it'll come out that way, but I just think it's been weird that we've allowed, you know, this is a courtroom, this is a fire department, this is a municipal boardroom, and anybody who wants, and there's a lot of, we don't know who has access to this building, because really, at the end of the day, we haven't, we don't have a good idea as far as how many people have access to it.
I wish I'd known last year that we were so relaxed about the fobs, because I actually didn't ask for one, and it would have been, made my life a lot easier sometimes, where I'm like texting someone with a fob to come down and let, let me in, so I could have a committee meeting.
If you belong to a condo association, or a Bible club, or something else, and we have knitting clubs, we have all kinds of different groups, the list we have goes back many years, there are people on there who haven't been employed with the village for, for years. So we have to, at this point, we, is the time to have a better security, better, better idea of who has access to the building. And the new, the new system, I'm sure, will show who's, everyone's gonna have a code, right, or whatever it's gonna be, we're gonna know that John, Mike, Lee, or.
Yeah, it's like just starting from scratch, and essentially, we're gonna go through the, scrub the list, and make sure everyone's, you're comfortable, like, these are the people that are gonna have fobs, these are the people that are gonna have access in other way, you know, through their phone, or whatever.
Chief, as the fire department, do you have, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I kind of agree, yeah, I mean, there's times when I come in, I don't know who's here, or who's, because once, once you're in the building, you can pretty much get around.
You can go anywhere.
Yeah, you can get down to the fire department if you're here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it's a, just actually just a review, yeah, who has.
And one other question, Cap, like all other doors are, like, physical key access, or they won't be able to, like, go in over on the fire department side, and just get in?
Uh, not even, if they can get into this hallway, they can get down to the fire department, because there's no doors internally, besides the one by the clerk's office, but if you come through here, you can go through the auditorium, down to the truck bay.
Captain, please, any thought?
Yeah, I do agree with you, as far as this day and age, just leave the building accessible to pretty much anybody, if it's, you don't know who's walking through the building.
Yeah.
So I would agree that there should be some measure of accountability, or at least knowing who's in that building, and.
Well, years ago, our ladder truck was found out at the country club, and nobody knows how it got there. It was about 3:00 in the morning.
Hmm, oh, yeah.
The police were in the building, they didn't, you know, see a fire truck go out, I don't know what those guys are doing. So, can't say it was stolen, but it was unexplained, that's for sure.
That's all I've got for building lights and codes, or not?
Hey, anything for John?
Yep.
Not human resources, Chairman Malone Schaefer's not here, community events. Tammy had asked me to just thank everybody who participated in not only the tree lighting, but the fire truck parade, both events went off very well. Fire Truck Parade has actually originated in Niagara Falls, and it found its way here, and it's done nothing but grow, and people, you know, it's a staple of that weekend, and of course, our tree lighting was very nice, Joanne Riesem was gracious enough to come down and light the tree, and he stuck around for quite a while signing autographs and shirts, and so it was a nice, I had, Mike, you know, cold, but it was, it was a good night. And I believe for New Year's Eve, Skylighters is looking into something a little bit different than fireworks, might be some type of sparklers or something like that, something a little cheaper and easier to pull off in that area, so looking at that, but again, that'll be on New Year's Eve, and that's all that she had. Economic development, I have nothing this evening for economic development. Sewer, Chairman O'Malley?
Only thing I have is, we have a sewer committee meeting scheduled for next week on the 15th, purposes just to discuss the Watts report that we were given last week, which was the investigation of many systems, four and seven, so just need to get together and discuss, okay, what do we do with this, what are the next steps?
Anything for John? Not grants, Chairman O'Brien?
Just a couple things. For the ZF grant, Bill Shott is currently reviewing the submissions that we received for the bids, and we'll hopefully have a resolution next board meeting to receive with that. That's for the EV charging station down at the Onkager Creek Park, the Level 3 Charger. I did want to talk a little bit about the pocket park next to this building, and the question about what to do with the dumpster. Matt actually provided a history of kind of correspondence in regard to the dumpster, but also the property in general, which I thought was pretty interesting to read through that. One thing that I noticed is there didn't seem to be any kind of agreement or permit to have the dumpster on village property, and it, it's currently on village property. I was, I had thought maybe that there had been some, something in writing, giving them permission to, to have it here, but I, clerk's office doesn't have anything, Matt didn't have anything, they haven't produced anything at this point.
Mm-hmm.
I think the really, the, their, their proposal to us was, Picasso's proposal to us, was either to move it, like, 50 feet to the south, which would put it where the firefighters have their reserved parking, and that's not doable. Their other proposal was to put it in front of their restaurant, which would put it right next to Broadway, which is not ideal, even if it's enclosed, it's this giant, you know, walled structure with a dumpster in it, everyone knows that there's a dumpster in it right along the sidewalk. I'm inclined to, and I don't mind reaching out to them and having the conversation to, you know, either on the phone or in person with the ownership over there, to, to pressure them to allow us to move the dumpster, or have them move the dumpster to the back of the parking lot, like we suggested. I think, like, staff, or the staff in this building walks all the way back there to throw out stuff here. The moose walks all the way back there to throw things out. They're not concerned about efficiency or liability. I think about your, your business over on, on West Main Street. I think about your, your business over on, on West Main Street. Your dumpster is across Central Avenue, across Clark Street, and in the middle of the Clark Street parking lot, which is much farther than from Picasso's to the back of our parking lot here. And that's the same for all the merchants on West Main Street, that's their designated dumpster. I think if, one of the realities is if you're going to have a dumpster on municipal property, you have to work with the village about where that dumpster makes the most sense. I don't think it makes sense next to this, this area we're trying to beautify, we're trying to make accessible to people, we're enhancing their business by putting this park in there, improving the value of their business, giving a place for people to sit and then smell pizza while they're out, you know, maybe they're not hungry, but they will be, you know, if they sit there for a couple of minutes. So I can reach out and hopefully have a cordial conversation to, if you're all on board with it, to insist that they can move back there. And Art, I think, once that happens, I would like an agreement written up that shows what our responsibilities are and what their responsibilities are in regards to the dumpster, because in the past, we saw that there's been some, some issues with the upkeep. I'm not sure, have they been recent, or is that just five years ago?
One was recent.
Yeah.
And again, it was the condition of the upkeep, and it would have been related specifically to their use. They do have a parking lot agreement for their employee vehicles.
Yeah.
I don't know if that got clean. And, you know, I'm an excellent furniture quarterback, going back decades of plan reviews and additions and approvals and, you know, how did that dumpster end up there? I don't have the answer. I wish it was somewhere documented on a formal plan and approval or something, but this is what happens when we don't do what we're supposed to do.
So that's why when we do this, I want to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do.
Moving forward, we got the I's, we crossed the T's, because when we're not here, somebody's going to ask a question.
Yeah.
How, and it should be clear.
So Art, what I'll do is I'll have the conversation first and just kind of, you know, start the dialogue. I'm not going to have you put the work in on it yet, but once I kind of get the feedback, I'll reach out to you and we can coordinate on writing something up.
Can they appropriate the house to the south of it as well?
Do they? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I know you wouldn't be able to just, you know, by code right now, I'm just, I don't know if that house is owned residential or not, but it's got a backyard. And, and I don't think you, I don't know if.
Well, I'm not going to tell him to put it on his own property, like, I'm okay with us posting.
Because that's the alternative. If you can't, if you don't like the part of our property we're offering to you.
Yeah, if he insists that he has a place for it on his property, and that it goes through planning and zoning if necessary to make sure that it's in compliance with our code.
And I don't think the front of the property is not at all, is at all compliant.
And also, part of that property is leased from the village anyway. One of the documents that Matt included was from the 2005 work that DOT did out here on Broadway, and they changed the way that Legion Parkway was configured, and they expanded the right-of-way. Or, well, they expanded, I guess, the.
Well, intersection.
Yeah, well, intersection. So therefore, some of those parking spaces he has in his lot are actually in the right-of-way, but he has an agreement with the village until 2030, I think. Yeah, to do that. But on the map that was provided by our engineers, by, well, by Labella, the dumpster was in that section, so it still would have been on village property even if it was on his property. So, but yeah, if he wants to move it, like, if as long as it goes through planning and zoning and that he can get his approvals, then that's fine too. But, and I could, you know, we can have those conversations if that's what he wants to do, but I don't think it's too far. His employees park in our parking lot. Like, it's not much farther to get to their cars than it would be to get to the dumpster in the back of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's just something that has to be done.
Yeah.
Bottom line, do it easy where and hard where.
It's not a fun conversation, but, you know, it's, it's fine. It'll be, I'm sure it'll, it'll be okay. Okay, well, as long as you guys are all in favor, then I will continue with that. So I have a meeting for the TAP grant next week with Legion Auto and DOT. That's more of the right-of-way stuff, the Central Avenue sidewalks, how half of them are, half the sidewalk belongs to the property owners, half of them belongs to the right-of-way. So we're still working on ironing out that acquisition process. The resolution tonight, as I mentioned when we went through it, was for the CEC grant, is to transfer funding on that grant to pay for the upgrades to the North End Fire Hall. It's like winterization type stuff, I think, improved windows, some weather stripping, that sort of thing, just to make it a more tight, a tighter building. And then under pending applications, this, it's going to kind of go into an on-hold status. I was able to have a conversation with supervisor Nowak and mayor Peterson about the Heritage Trail extension, and we all are in agreement that the financial lift at this point, with current funding available and the, like, using a TAP grant, is too much for us to, like, $2 million per municipality is, it's beyond what we feel comfortable taking on, it's beyond what DePew feels comfortable taking on, and Chik Waka, I think, would struggle. They had talked about potentially taking on a bigger burden, but I think even the $2 million would be a tough burden for them. So that's a lot to ask. So we agreed to kind of put this project on hold for the time being while we look into other funding sources. We had, you know, Go Bike on a call with us a few weeks ago, they talked about maybe seeking out some sort of charitable funding for it. I think that may be, you know, some sort of nonprofit partnership or private-public partnership for it could, could be a way to move forward, but, yeah, it's just, it's a very expensive project that we just can't accommodate at this point. But I will keep the board posted with anything that comes up on that. And that's it for grants.
Okay. Anything for trustee O'Brien? Tech and marketing, trustee Miller's out sick tonight, climate smart, chairman O'Brien?
We had our climate smart task force meeting last week, as well as our forest advisory board meeting. John, thank you for mentioning that we'll be looking at updating our urban forestry code to kind of match what we've learned over the years. You know, there were some tweaks back when we, when we did the, the urban forestry study in 2020, 2021, I think, was when that was done. But some more tweaks to be made, and that, that'll move along. Very excited to announce that the village has earned their Tree City certification for the seventh year in a row, which just shows our commitment and our DPW's commitment to planting trees. Last year, within the DPW and some help from very excited volunteers back in the spring, we planted over 250 trees in the village, with many more to come next year, more than, more than that amount.
Yeah, like less than three.
Yeah, yeah, so it's very exciting. It just shows our commitment to, to maintaining that green space and making sure our village stays walkable. And that's it for those reports.
Okay, that would complete the committee follow-up. Everybody should have got a Village of Lancaster Audience Participation Guideline. This is word for word what the town board does, and it's just a caution to people that want to address the board and how they need to behave. Art, would we need a motion to adopt this as a part of policy?
It was adopted until last week, we did it.
Okay, all right. Okay, well.
I think we said we would re, readdress it come every year during the organizational meeting.
Yep.
For instance, I think it should be five minutes, but, and I think the town does last five minutes, but I'm fine with it for now, but.
Yeah, I think what the town and other municipalities do is they get that, they, they have a cushion in there, if there's somebody hits that, that limit, it can be extended at the, at the will of the board, you know, depending on what the subject is. But I've seen that it seems to be pretty effective in the town, we're kind of fortunate here, we don't have the number of people that come in and address the board, but if they do, it's just they have a subtle place in place. So, and I apologize to that, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I must, I didn't see it in the minutes.
If you come in, we'll just let you talk, because we so rarely have people come in and talk.
Exactly.
Say more.
Okay, that's it for committee reports. Department head reports will be given to superintendent of public works, and I'll start. Wayne, the crews have done a fantastic job with the weather, the holiday decorations, the different events. I don't think we've lacked for a thing, and my compliments to you and your department, you've done a wonderful job.
Well, thank you. No, they, they're doing a lot, and we did try something different this year. I purchased a little more expensive salt to see how it would work for us. So economically, it's better for the environment and everything else, but it's supposed to you, it's a, the charge is more per ton. So we tried a little bit of it, and it worked very well. The problem was economically, it's not feasible for us to use it. So I did try, so we had a, you know, 100 tons of it just to try it, to see how it works, it works very well, but economically, it's, it's just a little too expensive for us to go on with, so I went back to the old stuff. It was bright blue, it worked out very well, but it just economically, you're better off going back to the old stuff. So we tried that, and then everything else seems to be going pretty good so far.
Good.
But other than that, the North End did start. So the project you were talking about, they did put the thermostat stuff in that, so they're all done by phones now.
Yeah.
Yep, so there, a couple of guys have the ability to change, check the temperature, if it gets too high, they're able to put it down on their phone. So we have that, just so we could save some money there, so they don't get too warm or something in certain areas of the building. So other than that, everything's going pretty good.
Good. Anything for superintendent?
What was the difference in price per ton?
$40 a ton, which is substantial, but if you say you're supposed to use half less, I don't think it was quite to that, and I think our machines are a little too old, so the adjustments weren't up to par with what we needed to do, so we'd lower it, so it would work the spin rate and everything else for the solder. So I just think we wanted to try it to see how it was, and, you know, it worked very well, but it's just economically not ready for our, what we need yet.
Yeah.
So.
You don't think you'd use that much less, it wouldn't pay for itself?
Yeah, you use less, but not enough to compensate for the cost. So I did try.
Anything else for superintendent, if not clerk Trezier-Stegmeyer?
The only thing, we, I received contact from the Erie County Board of Elections, and they previously used the North End Fire Hall for elections, and then they moved away from municipal sites, but they're losing a location next year, so they reached out, they would like to use the North End Fire Hall again next year, which I checked with the fire chiefs, they had no issue with that. So they're going to come out this Wednesday for an inspection, just kind of do their due diligence to make sure that it works for them. So it will be a polling site again next year as it was in, in previous years, just for county elections, just for the county.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it doesn't inconvenience the fire department, I don't think the board would have a problem with it.
So they'll send all the standard agreements and that, they've done in the past.
There you go. Anything for Mike? Code enforcement?
Well, we're pretty active, so, you know, we're at the tail end of the season, getting ready for the holidays, but the work is still progressing. We're anticipating several change in use applications for new businesses coming into the areas, both the Hart project is finalizing their infrastructure, so we're going to start to see a lot of tenant applications and a little more activity at that site. I do want to thank our law enforcement department, we had an incident here in the village, we had to take some enforcement action on some squirrely activities on, on permit, we had to stop the job and kind of redirect the applicant to follow the code properly. It got a little bit ugly, but, you know, again, our police department is, they were responsive, they understood our concerns, it looks like we're going in a positive direction on that property. As I've said every meeting, reach out if you have questions, concerns, something that we could do a lot better for you, a little less intrusive, whatever it is, we're here to service the village.
Okay. Thank you. Fire chief Kukulaka?
Not much, coming down to the end of the year, so we're tracking for a little of the performance calls, we're down for the last year, which is always a good thing. We're done with our drills and training for the year, so we had a little over $3,500 for that. Department of Physicals with us Saturday and also tonight. I think I thank the village board for allowing us to, both the EKGs and the blood work for our interior firefighters, and we'll be at New Year's Eve for the ball drops.
Anything for the chief? Again, the fire truck parade is, I know we participate in it, and Jerry and Tom pretty much set it up, but it's, it was a cold night, but a big turnout. I was surprised, and a lot of people that I'd seen around had asked about it, so it's getting a lot of notoriety, and be another one of the things we're famous for, I guess.
What does it mean when I'm driving down Central Avenue at 10:00 in the morning and chairs are already out on the curb?
Yeah, they're, they used to, I always bring up this thing, is this 16 or 13 here? Maybe even longer. They line up now, starting at the high school now with chairs and stuff, which never used to happen, so yeah, they're, they got their spots out there early in the morning.
Yeah.
But yeah, no major incidents as far as any trucks, no.
It's good, no, it's a, it's a nice thing. Cap, anything from the PD?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay.
How did Clark Street go after the fire truck parade?
I did not hear anything negative about it.
That's good.
My other thing is it went well.
Good.